All right, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. This is the meeting of the zoning board of appeals for Monday, March 31st. This meeting is being recorded in accordance with town bylaws and will be submitted to Whitman Hansen Community Access to be put on their website for public availability. Before I open the hearing, I wanted to address something that came up at the end of last meeting. We were discussing the expiration date for permits that have been issued, and I mentioned that I thought there was a recent state law that extended it. So I got town council provided me with that. This is Acts of 2024, Chapter 238, Section 280. It basically extended, any permit that was issued in 2023 or 2024 has been extended an additional two years by this state law. So our special permit under our town bylaws is good for a year, and you have to at least start using it within a year, likewise of variances. So essentially, that means anything we approved in 2023 won't expire until 2026. Anything from 2024 won't expire till 2027. If I got that right, Rob? Is that the way you understand it? Yes, okay. So, all right. So with that, we'll turn to the hearing for tonight, which is case number six. Let me also, just again, for the record, present tonight for the zoning board, Mr. Jones, Mr. Andrews, Mr. Kimball, Mr. Keeman, Mr. Blaws, and myself, John Goldrosen. So our case tonight, first case, only case on the agenda for tonight, is case number six. Location of property, 447 Harvard Street. Type of district, A2 and limited industrial. Type of structure, multifamily condominium over 55. Owner's name, Egan Development LLC. Owner's address, 6 Pasture Lane, Whitman. When did you acquire this property? 2021. His application been filed to clerk? Yes, as any previous appeal been made doesn't state here. Section of bylaw which relief is requested, site plan approval under Section 240-7.2, variances from 240-5.4 and 240-7.3C and D. This case was advertised in the Whitman Hansen Express on March 13th and March 20th. Sitting on the case will be Mr. Andrews, Mr. Kimball, Mr. Keeman, Mr. Blaws, and myself, John Goldrosen. At this time, I have the reading of the list of abutters. Blaws?
Thank you, Chairman. This is the certified list of abutters from the Board of Assessors in East Bridgewater and in Whitman. I'll start with the Whitman abutters. 481 Harvard LLC, Kevin and Rose Di Matteo, Michael and Lila Donovan, Egan Development LLC, Michael C. Fagan, Catherine Kerr, and Patrick Fettle, Kevin O'Hara, Angela Ambriana, Whitman Housing Authority, and then with East Bridgewater, Riverview Realty Trust, Pierre Rosalyn, and Fedner Jean. And I'm not sure to correct enunciation on this one, or I guess the way it goes, but says Brown Curtis, no, Brown, Robert Curtis, and N. Coates, N. W. Vernon, care of Heidi Parent.
Thank you. Okay, I'll explain the procedure for members of the public, how we handle these hearings. First, we ask the applicant to make a full presentation on the proposed project. I'll then read into the record letters from town boards that we've received on the project and ask any other town officials here to comment on it. We'll then have questions and comments from members of the zoning board, and we'll then go out to the public for your questions and comments. So since we essentially are taking testimony like a judicial proceeding, we ask that everybody raise their right hand and take an oath to participate in this. Do you solemnly swear the evidence shown given this matter shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Okay. Who is representing the applicant and start seeing?
Yeah, let's not. No, John, did you name the people that are voting on this?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, you did.
I did. Thank you.
I was asleep. No. Thank you. Kyle Gabby, representing Egan Development LLC, Steve Egan, owner, who's here tonight. The property is located on the west-fully side of Harvard Street, north of the East Bridgewater-Whitman line. It contains 18.7 acres of property. It's watered on the east side by Harvard Street, residential lots on Harvard Street. On the south, by a wooded parcel, partially in the town of East Bridgewater. On the west, by a large parcel located on Bedford Street, formerly auto lines, automotive off of Bedford Street. On the north, by Pine Haven, Whitman Housing Authority, which is Pine and Even Drive that connects to Harvard Street, to the Harvard Court Development, and also property, primary area that's owned by Donovan to the north. The property lies within two zoning districts, the residence A2 and the industrial zone. So there are two different zones for this particular property. The property is wooded for the most part in slopes from east to west, from elevation 111 at Harvard Street to the rear of the property at elevation 80. So there's basically a 31-foot drop within the site itself. The property was delineated for wetlands with the Conservation Commission. There is a wetland line that was approved by the Conservation Commission. So this project will be filed if approved with the Conservation Commission, as work will be within the 100-foot buffer zone of a wetland. The project consists of constructing a 900-foot roadway that will access 11 buildings containing 16 units, either duplexes or single-family, and will also access a three-story, 29-unit building to the rear. Parking, each of the smaller units will have a driveway with garage off of the Northville Road accessway. The larger building to the rear will have an underground garage from the access to the north side of it, and a 35-car space parking area. See, water for the project will be tied into Harvard Street and will run down Northville Road with access to each of the units. Water to the larger building will be in two lines, four-inch file line and also a domestic line. There will be hydrants along, two hydrants along Northville Road, one at the end of the cul-de-sac, one halfway down, with also another hydrant out at the intersection of Pine Tree Lane. Sewer for the project, the first three units will be connected to the sewer in Harvard Street. Remaining units in the larger building, there presently is a sewer line that runs from Harvard Street into our property, northerly through the Housing Authority's property to the north. So the main buildings will be tied into that existing trunk line that runs through the The drainage for the project, the roadway itself will have a total of seven catch basins within the roadway itself, and those will be connected to infiltration basins. Soil testing on the site was done, several test pits were done on the site, all indicated medium to coarse sands within the upper portion of the property, which is what we're utilizing for tying in the catch basins, infiltration basins. Another basin will be within the larger parking area that will tie into infiltration basin, another basin that collects runoff from the accessway into the garage, and that will also be tied into infiltration basin. Some of the roof areas to equalize previous areas are also infiltration basins for the roof areas of the buildings. The roadway itself will be a 24-foot wide road with 12-inch cape guard berm on each side. There'll also be a 4-foot sidewalk along the southerly side of Northville Road. And underground utilities, as far as electric, will be also included within the roadway for lighting and electric and any gas that would be going to these units. Let Steve, our architect, give you a layout of what the buildings would be like.
Kyle, before you do that, could you, is that a wetland crossing where the road is, that's in yellow on the map?
That'll be a wetland crossing in there, which will require filing under the notice of intent.
And can you show where else on the property is the wetland? Is that mainly the back of the property? Okay, I see now, BVW versus uplands?
Yeah, you can see the flag numbers on there. So this is, this is all in our plan. This is all, this is all our plan. There's a wetland crossing, a wetland area that comes through this particular portion. We have a pipe going underneath there, and we will, because we will be filling this small little portion of wetlands, we will be doing a replication area inside where this retaining wall is and where the BVW is, but that will come under the Conservation Commission's jurisdiction.
Okay, thank you. All right, Steve Egan?
Steve Egan, Egan Development. This is my son, Steve Egan Jr., who's the architect on the project. Just kind of a couple of general things. We acquired this, we had originally come from you guys, we originally acquired this property upfront here and got approval from you guys to do two houses, and conservation approval for these yellow areas that you were already talking about. Subsequently after that, multiple next-door neighbors started approaching us to see if we wanted to buy some of their land, and we ended up buying four additional pieces of property. And after getting that approval, and then started looking at what we wanted to try and do with it, and what would fit in the town, what would fit in the area. And first thing we did, obviously, is flag, because there's a little burko back here, and there was quite a bit, so this is all upland, other than this yellow area here, and then this is all upland in the back end here, and then the wetland area kind of wraps around the whole outside of the project. So the first thing we started looking at is possibly single families. A lot of this property is industrial zone, so that's an issue in itself, because I'm sure nobody really wants industrial off of Harvard Street, but a good chunk, probably three-quarters of it is probably industrial zone, and the rest of it is residential zone up here. So we started trying to figure out, you know, what to work with, and obviously, on Harvard Street, residential is obviously closed in there and not industrial uses. We also looked at the fact that there's already multifamily, the Pine Haven Drive project abuts us here, which also connects to Harvard Court, is another multifamily, both owned by the town. So we started looking at it from the multifamily point of view, and we thought over 55 would be a good avenue for the site and also for the town. And we decided to start coming up with that design. And we really wanted to try and not use this upland area back here and leave a large section. We probably have, it's an 18-acre site, I think, total. We probably have 10 to 12 acres that will be left as natural open space by doing it a little bit higher density up in the front, but really not any high density than what's already there with the Pine Haven Drive and the Harvard Court sites. We decided we would do a mix of freestanding units, which have had a number of people over the years in town asking me to do something more freestanding, and we also did the same style unit, but do them as duplexes and kind of mixed them together. And then to have a different price point, we decided to have the multi-story building, which has been popular in some other towns in Plymouth, they're doing quite a few of them, there's a new one in Halifax, all over 55, and they've been seeing great demand on them. We wanted to try and do the garage under it, which was another request we've had from people just to have some sort of garage parking space. So everything has at least an oversized one-car garage, and then some extra area spots also. So on the freestanding and duplex-style units, we've done something, trying to keep it in, obviously, a colonial-looking design. They all have an oversized one-car garage. The single freestanding units are the same as the duplex, they're just attached as far as layout size. And again, the plans are preliminary, so we still ongoing sweeping them. But we have about 1,200 square feet of living space on the first floor with first-floor master, master bath, half-bath, a common area, kitchen, living, dining area, first-floor laundry, oversized garage. And then on the second floor, extra space or guest area with a lofted family room, another bedroom, and a bathroom, and these will also have full basements. Some of them will have walkout backs, some of them will have doghouse entries. And the, yeah, on the back, the single-story units, the freestanding units are exactly the same as the layout-wise, but they're just freestanding instead of having a duplex attached to it. The multi-story, which will be in the back of the property, will also have the clubhouse area in it, as well as 29 units in garage parking underneath for, which will accommodate one spot for every unit down below. The first floor has a large kind of common area that will be set up with some kitchen space, some break room area for meetings, an exercise room, and then some apartments on the condos, I shouldn't call them, these are all for sale projects, there's not going to be renting, some condos on the first floor. We are considering a little redesign potentially on this and moving the common area space to the end of the building and keeping all of the units together, so that will keep the same square footage of common area space, but we might tweak that floor plan a little bit. There's a mix of one in two-bedroom units. This would be a typical, the second and third floor are identical, but a typical setup as far as a mix of two bedrooms, a mix of one bedrooms. They're good-sized units. The parking, again, will be under the building, and then everybody also, there's also another 35 parking spaces for the parking lots at the front. And then this elevation gives you an idea of, you know, the end of the building where the garage space access would be coming in from the right side of the building. The garden units, we anticipate pricing to be in the high 300s and starting prices and then into the mid 4s. The freestanding and duplex units, we think will be priced from the upper 5s and with different options that will go higher on that, too. Conservatively, I think the project will add about $200,000 a year in new tax dollars to the town. And again, we tried to design it so that the architecture part of it would fit in with other classes in the area, housing in the area, and also really try and leave a large lump of space, because beyond this, if you were to go beyond our property, it goes out to the fields across from Pice Meadows, all the old farm fields, there's a couple more off of our property, there's another river out there. So by keeping it a little bit higher density in the front, it gives us the opportunity to leave a larger section in the back that then changed together with this other property that's out there off of our property. The alternative is, you know, we come in with a longer road and do more single-family housing, but then you are going to end up coming into the back area in here with that grid, and we thought this would be a better design for the project to do it this way.
Couple of questions, are there basements to the one- and two-family?
Yep, full basement on each one.
So full finished basement?
Unfinished, but yep.
Okay.
If somebody wants to finish it, it can be finished.
Okay, yeah. There's no, no windows down there, right?
There would be windows in the rear of the unit now.
And can you, when I was looking at the plans, I couldn't quite figure out how the loft, what was, what was floor, what wasn't. I mean, from the diagrams, it looks like it's basically a one-story building with space over the garage for the second bedroom and that.
Sure.
But I couldn't tell if it's a cathedral ceiling or what it really was.
So since we went, Steve Egan, Egan Architects, here, I should probably step up a little. The, so because we went with a cave style to keep the roof lines low, you know, classic New England architecture, this all exists in sort of the attic space. So this would be the rear of the building, the roof starts sloping up, this is the front of the building, portion of the lower, so a portion of the roof. So now that it slopes up, these two walls represent where you reach 7 feet of ceiling height. So essentially just frame shoot full height, not really any walls, and then the middle space becomes finished loft space, the rest would be, you know, attic access or just insulated in.
Okay.
Some of it's over the garage, and some of it comes in over the, I don't want to pick up.
Over the family, over the family area?
Kitchen, living room here would be kind of whole center.
Okay.
So the loft is over the dining area, the guest bedroom sort of straddles the garage and the walk-in closet, and the, and then the additional unfinished mechanical space off of the bedroom is truly over the garage.
But the loft space is the same, there's no stairs, you're not going up, it's the same elevation as the?
No, it's on second floor.
No, I'm saying same elevation as the second floor?
Yes.
Even though it says attic space, it's not above the second floor, it's even with the second floor. Now, that's just the dormer?
Yeah, so in the, when you get up to the second floor, we're then going to have some attic space in the eaves, which the front part has the roof pitched down, there'd be some attic space in those areas.
Over the garage, basically, right?
Part of the garage is finished, and then the front part of the garage is, would be eave space in the back part, over the, like the master bedroom.
This, this area here represents the roof, you know, obviously it's a flat elevation, so you can see that, you know, the height there is similar to the height of, you know, the first story. So that's where it's all over this area behind, where the window would be off the side gable wall.
Okay, all right. All right, anything else? Steve Egan? Okay, all right. So let me read some letters into the record. I'll ask for town departments to comment, anyone who's here. From Whitman Fire, Rescue, and Emergency Services, I have no issues with the development going in at 447 Harvard Street if all applicable codes and standards are followed. At this time, I only see two fire hydrants within the development and would like an additional fire hydrant to be installed in front of the first single-family residence on the left side coming in off Harvard Street. As for the fire hydrant currently shown after the third residence on the left side, I would like that relocated to the northeast corner of the apartment building, mirroring the last fire hydrant currently shown. Doing these changes will decrease, decrease the amount of hose lays the fire department would have to do in an emergency, and increase the available pressure needed with shorter lengths of hose. I would also like to make sure access into the apartment building's parking lot can accommodate the 48-foot ladder truck that responds on all fire alarms. Any questions, feel free to reach out. Sincerely, Nicholas Grasso, Deputy Fire Chief. From the Whitman Planning Board, at the March 11th, 2025 meeting, the board reviewed the plan for 447 Harvard Street. The planning board recommends approval of the requested variances as presented for 4 to 0. Adam Somerville, Chairman. And from the Board of Health, the Whitman Board of Health gives conditional approval to the petition of Egan Development LLC for site plan approval under Section 240-7.2 and variances from Sections 240-5.4, 240-7.3C, and 240-7.3D for a proposed over 55 multifamily condominium on the property located at and adjacent to 447 Harvard Street. To receive final approval, the owner must connect all new dwellings to municipal water and sewer. Sincerely, Dan Kelly, Health Agent. Building permission is present. Mr. Pecorelli, do you have any questions and comments?
Yeah, at this time, Mr. Chairman, just assuming that all the structures are going to meet the building code, all applicable building codes, I'm good with it, but the 29-unit, three-story building, I'm assuming is going to be fully sprinkled?
Yes.
Okay. And it's going to be construction control?
Yep.
Okay, and I do reserve the right for a third-party independent review on the larger building. The site plan as it stands, I noticed there's a lot of wetlands in the area. Kyle, any of this construction going on, and any flood plans?
No.
Okay. So at this time, those are the questions I have.
Okay. Anyone else from town boards or departments here? Okay. All right, I'll go to members of the board, and Mr. Jones, even though you're not voting, voting on the panel, since you're a member of the board, do you have any questions or comments?
None of them.
Okay. Mr. Andrews?
I have a question. On number 107 to 114, on the, on the bearing, the closeness to 43 feet, 150 feet, is that it?
Yes.
They're all going to be 43 feet?
I don't think they all are, but I think that's the closest.
All right, also, the same units, so that would be 30, 30 apart instead of a 45?
Yes.
Well, single units have a one-car underground garage, do they?
It's a tech garage, not under.
Oh, not going to be underground?
No.
And the last, the last building has 29 parking spaces underground?
Yes.
Plus also?
Plus 35 in the parking lot, yeah.
All right. And all of the single units, one or two stories, is that right? One bathroom?
Yeah, they're two and a half with the bathroom on the second floor.
That's all I have ready to note, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Kimball?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've got a couple of concerns and questions relative to the parking under the building. It's nine-foot wide parking spaces. Where I live, we've got 10-foot ones, and they're all banged up, so it's very tight down here, so I hope you realize that. On the garage under, we're going to have some provisions for water coming down the driveway, pumps, stuff to get the water out?
There'd be drainage designed in the, in the garage area and in the driveway area coming down for us, so that would all be accommodated by a drainage system.
Yeah, we have a, we have a drainage that goes in front of the
Yeah, we have a, we have a drain that goes in front of the access, a catch basin in front of the access to the, if you look at the drainage sheet, there's a catch basin in, in front of, this roadway slopes into the garage, there's a basin there that then goes out into an infiltration basin.
Okay. You know, you're not going to need a sewer pump, you're going to go directly into the sewer line that goes afterwards, also for the outlet, maybe a sewer pump.
No, it's actually, the line's pretty deep there, going that easy area, yeah. And I did, I did meet with the DPW also in the war, that our layout and how it's going to tie into the existing sewer line, and, and they also voted and approved the water flow connections.
Are you going to give any of the weight to the town, or are you going to keep it all as part of the association?
Part of the association is their initial plan. I don't know if the town wants it, last couple times that people took on land, they, they didn't seem like they wanted it. I think they want to keep it on the tax, on the tax roll.
Well, I think we should too.
Yeah.
That's, that's my question.
Yeah.
It's good to get rid of it, but it's going to be, is there only going to be one private association for the whole thing, or?
Yes.
It's going to be a complicated, uh, process, D.
Yep.
Are you putting in a street lighting yet, or you're not going to put lighting like you did on the office street?
There's, there's going to be street lights that are going to be?
Yeah. Okay, and the only other thing, we've got single-family housing, and kind of when you do single-family housing, it should be a subdivision, so I, I would prefer to see two or three units together, but that's my opinion. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Mr. Keeman?
Uh, there's a three-story required with dumpster.
The three-story building, yeah, there'll be a dumpster for, for that building there, and it may accommodate everything in there, but we're kind of exploring whether we can do curbside pickup, private curbside pickup for some of the units and all, but maybe dumpster at the clubhouse main building there for everybody.
You gotta have, roll, put a section in there and fence it off.
Yeah, we should, as you're going down the driveway towards the garage under, there's a dumpster, so.
That's all I had.
Mr. Platas?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Overall, I think it's a, it's actually a very good plan from Mr. Egan. I did take some time to go through and, not trying to pick it apart, just wanted to make sure all the bases were covered. So the 7-2 site plan approval, 5.4 plant cluster development, that's A4, and then A12 multifamily, well, it says multifamily and apartment buildings, does that include condos?
I don't think the town differentiates between condo and.
That's 240, 54, A12.
Yeah, we, and we don't differentiate on the basis of, of ownership, so. Well, to go over that though, so we need a variance because, because it's not allowed in the?
In the A2 or limited industrial, that's A4.
Okay.
And then the multifamily apartment dwellings is not allowed in limited industrial, and that's the A12, I believe you have that covered. And then 7.3C dimensional requirements, I believe in the application, it simply generally spoke 7.3C, but there are different things within 7.3C, and I think we need to look at those individually.
Yeah.
Would you, would this also include D, 7?
Yes, I, I believe it doesn't, yeah.
It doesn't, it does include that?
Okay.
Yeah. And Steve, what's, what's the height of the 29-story, 29-unit building, what's the overall height?
It's about two, two hands, so it'd be 35 feet, I think, so.
It'd be under 40 feet?
Yeah.
Back to 7, 7.3 multifamily dwellings and apartments. So one, at least 50 feet from every, any lot line.
Which we got some that are not.
Right. And then at least 50 feet from any street line.
Which I believe we have that.
You have that, right, because that's just the, the one unit in front. And then 15 feet from any parking area, it looks like the big building doesn't meet that.
Does not meet that.
Does not meet that, so I had, I had the number three, and then number four, at least 45 feet apart.
Which some of the buildings are not.
Right, so you need, need a variance on that. And then on D, max eight buildings per unit.
The big building doesn't?
Or, yeah, on the big building, so. And then I had a couple of others that I just want to inquire about, under eight, sitting on 240, 8, 10. C, visual relief, and, and I'm not picking here, but I just want to make sure we cover all of our bases. That has to do with visual relief, I believe it's in the parking lot, so this is just one large parking lot, correct?
Correct.
Can I, then I'll?
Parking lot in the back.
Right, I just want to make sure. It'll go out right here, I should put my page in.
But I've got, I've got.
Eight, eight dash 10.
Eight dash 10, C. Parking lots shall contain visual relief from vast expanses of unbroken blacktop and cars and parking areas exceeding a quarter acre but less than one acre in area. Landscaping islands containing trees of greater than six feet in height shall be provided at a rate of at least six per 80 parking spaces. I don't believe you're asking, or I guess I'm asking, are you looking for relief from that as well, because the parking space is greater than?
We do, we do have landscape areas surrounding the whole parking lot?
No, not surrounding, that's within the parking lot.
Yeah.
I don't think we're more than a quarter, well, it's, you said a quarter of an acre, right?
No, in parking areas, yeah, exceeding a quarter acre, but less than one, so this is less than a quarter acre, are you sure?
I can tell you in a minute.
Because I believe I did some, I did the look on it.
24 plus, uh, 24. 24.
Yeah. 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 Yeah.
We could add some landscape areas.
I'm not asking you to put trees in there.
Yeah.
I'm just asking you.
I personally hate that.
I, I can't, I can't imagine plomings, but I'm asking if you, if you're seeking relief for that as well.
We, we didn't, we didn't anticipate that, but it sounds like we probably would need to have relief.
So I made a note on that.
We can't re-design the parking lot, put a couple islands in there.
Not asking you to do that.
Okay.
I mean, this, I'm just, I'm just, we've got the new zoning, and so we're going to use it. And then on 9.3, what type of signage you're going to have up there?
Uh, we're going to have a landscaped area in, in front here, and have plans to have either small wood or stone carved sign up there.
So do you expect that sign to be less than 20 square feet, four by five?
Yes.
Okay, so you won't need a, a variance on D. We actually have a requirement that the light not be lit after 11:00 PM.
On the sign.
But I think most of the, yeah, on the sign, I think most of the signs in town are lit at night.
Yeah.
As well, it probably should be, so you probably need a relief from 9.3F as well.
Yeah.
Okay, so. The, does the, does Northville Road, is that going to, will that meet subdivision, that is going to be built to subdivision standards?
Yes.
So it is, okay.
But, but be private?
It's a private way.
Okay, so it's a private way.
But we've designed the width, the, the drainage, everything?
Based on the subdivision.
Based on subdivision standards, thank you, I was hoping it would.
The pond that's shown on the, I won't call the C as built, but on the plan, does that exist now?
Yeah, correct, yes.
Is that going to be altered in any way?
No.
Okay, so it won't be used for drainage or anything like that?
No.
Also, another question, is the building 29 units as listed, or is it 27? Because I swear I counted it about five times, and every time I came up with 10, 10, and 7.
Is that right?
It'd be 10, 10, and 8.
So you've got 10 on the second and on third floor, but I swear you've got, unless I can't read, you've got 7 on the first floor.
You're right.
So it's 27 units, 29, okay.
And we did, we originally, I think that's 20, originally we were 29 and we had less clubhouse space, we didn't have the exercise area, and we ended up eliminating two units and making the exercise area right now.
Okay.
Obviously, we didn't change the plan.
Right, right. The entrance to the building is in, and I'm talking about the 27-unit condo building, the entrance, the main entrance is in the middle of the building, correct? Is there, because this is an over 5, 55 community, I don't see any handicap access to it.
Uh, the handicap curb access going into the building.
But you're looking at like, it looks like three or four stairs to get into the building. If you look at your, your front elevations?
Oh, yeah, that makes, that makes sure something different on the rendering there, but there won't be any stairs, this is actually all parking lot and that stair won't be there.
Right, but then even when I looked at your, if this is the correct, yeah, even when I looked here, you got stairs.
Yeah, it's showing a, a pad landing there, but there, there's not going to be any stairs going into the building, so we're going to come, there's going to be a handicap ramp coming out of the parking lot, up onto the sidewalk, and then right into the building.
All right, wanted to make sure of that.
The, the pullouts for that building are still somewhat schematic, and make sure they're not tackling the actual topography of the site.
All right. It was, I believe, was it, Mr. Andrews asked about the, the natural space in that, oh, I know Mr. Campbell did, the, on the Westley side, you've got the acreage here, whether you were going to try to, would you agree to, to leave that as open space and to not subdivide it?
Yes.
Could we put that in as one of the conditions of the variances?
Probably won't be subdivided.
Yeah, it won't be subdivided, you won't be able, they, the condo association.
Further developed.
Further developed, they could sell it off to somebody who ties in from Route 18 or something?
Yeah.
Okay, wouldn't want to do that. These are all condominiums, they're not apartments. One of my concerns had, had to be with your definition of, of how many bedrooms? When, when I look at, oh, like a unit D, and I see office and den, it's being advertised, or not advertised, well, to us, as a two-bedroom, but, oh, look, there's a 15-by-almost-nine-foot office den with a closet and double doors. That tells me it's a three-bedroom, it's not a two-bedroom. Because these are going to get sold, I don't really care, you've got 70 parking spaces or whatever it is, I don't, but I just, if it's a three-bedroom, call it a three-bedroom, that's all I'm asking.
Yeah, we, we, obviously with all 55, we're not anticipating.
I don't know.
There isn't any.
And on the single families, you could turn those into four or five bedrooms.
Yeah.
When you look at that, that, that front space, that. Yeah, the loft area could, could easily become a, that's it, a loft area, unfinished that, but it's, that's why, that was my question, why it's the same elevation as a second-floor bedroom, it's 16 feet by 10 feet, that's the bedroom. I realize the roof would be sloped, but as long as that front window is large enough to meet the fire, fire official requirement or the building conditioners' access, two means of egress, and you could turn that part of that loft into a, so you could turn it into a four or five-bedroom.
Well, you can't turn that specific area into a bedroom, you can't exit a bedroom to a, to another bedroom.
You can't, okay.
By the building code. Again, his presentation is showing what he's submitting, if, if you disagree with it, that's, that's your option, but he'd be in violation if he didn't adhere to what he's submitting.
All right, but you, do you agree, Mr. Piccarelli, that on the D, well, I don't know the difference between a D and a D1, because some of these were called Ds, some were called D1s, and only the Ds had the drawings. But do you agree, Mr. Piccarelli, that?
Well, I agree that anybody coming in that's owning them could, they could turn it into whatever they wanted it to.
Because they own them, God bless them, they could do whatever they want with them.
And, and, let me rephrase, they could turn it into what they wanted to, that would be unknown to us, unless, unless it was brought up.
Right, right. And I can't figure out why anyone over 55 with three bedrooms or four bedrooms, they want to put, if it's a walkout in the back.
I'd be surprised.
But then again, I guess I was going to ask you, Mr. Campbell, how does that work if you're on an over 55, how do you enforce that?
With legal?
It's in the condo dogs.
It's in the condo dogs.
It's in the condo dogs.
And?
If somebody, if somebody buys one of your units, and they're over 55, but their son or daughter moves in, and the son or, son or daughter has a couple of kids, and it's either that or the streak, how do you get them out, or can you get them out?
You can get them out, it's, the Auburn building, when we did that, was, was designed the same way, so if, if someone wants to, like in Auburn building, if someone is older and ill, they can have a family member live with them as their caretaker, but they have to be over the age of 30. And anyone else can only stay there for a certain number of days, they can't just move in and stay there, and it can be enforced if someone.
So if the caretaker has children, the children aren't allowed there?
And that'll be reflected in the, in the condo association.
Yes, it's in the condo, that's the Ds.
So we could, we could make that a condition of our decision, that such a provision be put in the condo dogs. I mean, we won't enforce it, but the town won't enforce it, but require it to be in the condo dogs.
I think that's, take them.
All right.
Can I just make one quick?
Yes, please.
On all the setbacks, we, I know you like, you mentioned like doing bigger buildings, six units, eight, but we can do up to eight units. And our first goal there, so Kyle, I'll tell you, we actually have more units doing bigger buildings, six, because I don't have all these setbacks, but I didn't, we didn't like how it looked, it's like, I don't, I think it looks better being more of a village setting and having some, some leeway on setbacks, as opposed to having eight units in a row on, it's, it's part of why we did it, so we actually eliminated units by doing that.
I think it looks much better.
Yeah.
That way.
Yeah.
Few questions and more of a general comment. The question of the parking spaces came up, and I, I noticed that too, they're, at least the ones underneath the lodge building are 9 by 18, what about the ones in the open parking lot?
They're 10 by 20s.
Yeah, I think, I think the ones inside the main building need to be 10 by 20. Now, I'll say it being one such person, particularly where this is an over 55 development, I think you need 10 by 20, I've been in buildings, senior buildings, who've had smaller spaces, and it wasn't pretty.
Okay.
And if that, you know, again, you have plenty of space in the main parking lot there that.
We can make those 10 by 20 and eliminate some parking spaces underneath, and our hope was to try and get one, but as we just pointed out, we actually only have 27 units announced.
Right.
Have some room to eliminate a couple spaces and then get them.
That means you only got 16 feet.
What, what is the, the width of the alley, or whatever you want to call it, the corridor between the? the width of the alley or whatever you want to call it, the corridor between the, in the parking spaces, Kyle?
Outside?
Inside?
Twenty.
The outside? No, he's talking about inside.
Yeah, well, both, but it looks like insides.
Twenty-four feet in the parking, outside parking.
Okay.
Nearly two by fours, sixteen feet to back out.
Yeah, I mean, if you, so it's currently twenty feet, it looks like?
Yeah, so we have extra space in behind a lot of these areas here that we can kind of widen that.
Okay.
We might have a couple, a couple of units where it gets a little bit tighter, that we, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I could live with that being a little shorter, it's the width I'm most concerned about.
Eighty percent of these, we can have ten by twenty.
Okay. All right, so to maximum extent possible, ten by twenty, and then you'll just have to, if somebody has, you know, an oversized pickup truck, you make sure they get a ten by twenty and not a ten by eighteen, that's, okay, all right. Do you want, maybe just explain your reasoning for having some of the freestanding units be single units versus the duplexes?
I've had a lot of people ask me about having freestanding units, so that's kind of why we did that. It's to try and mix in a few that are, they're still going to be the same condo as everybody else, they don't own any land around them, it's all a common area. But it just gave us another aspect of concern much further.
I guess what I meant was, why not have all duplexes, what, why?
I thought it was, like I said, we, we looked at all duplexes, we looked at triplexes, we looked at all fours, and get more units in there, but it just, it didn't, it wasn't laying out great, and then we decided we would try and just do a mix, so that we have some duplexes that will be at one price point, the freestanding ones will be at another price point.
Okay.
And then the garden style units would be all a bit more affordable in the units.
Okay. The sewer easement, which I see on the plan, so is, is there an existing sewer line then? Okay, and that, and part of that runs under where you're proposing to have the, what you call the Northville Road. Is that any issue that you're building on top of?
You know, that's why I went into the DPW and they, they had discussed that at their board meeting and approved us doing that in the water source actions.
All right, and you would tie in directly to that sewer line?
For the back part of these, one's inside the street, yeah.
Okay. So I'll just say, I, I have some concerns about the lodge building. The rest is, you know, fits in with a residential area, but this seems to me out of scale, and we've, we've zoned other areas of the town now for three and four story buildings. I personally would rather see this all be one and two, I agree with not going three and four units, I think those don't look very good. But I, I would rather see that building not there and have, have it all be one and two unit buildings. As far as the common area, I mean, you could have, still have a building with some, but I wonder how much that gets used. I know I, I have friends in Oak Point in Middleborough, which is hundreds if not thousands of units, and I've walked into their, you know, their big common room, common building, and there's hardly ever anybody in there, just how they gets used. Mr. Campbell, is there a, do you have a community building at Auburnville?
We have forty people for Bengal Friday night.
Yeah. And how many units are in Auburnville?
Ninety-two.
Ninety-two.
The gym gets used probably sixteen hours a day.
Okay.
The big space, we got big pond and pool, it gets used four or five times a week, so there's.
Okay, I mean, this is smaller, so I don't know, I just, I'm not sure it's.
And on your lockout, you know, we looked at like the, we look at like multi-story apartment buildings, and the same thing with Pine Tree, which both of these tie into this, that it really wasn't coming out of place, and that, but we did decide to put that building towards the back, where it's kind of away from everything anyway.
Yeah, I mean, I appreciate that, and I'll be interested to see what the butters think and what the board members think. I also have some concerns with the units at the, at the entrance, the three units to the Harvard Street side of the wetland crossing. First of all, a bit concerned with the way Northville Road comes in, not opposite Pine Tree Lane, which obviously you can't do because there's property there, but it's like so close to it, I worry about the, the safety issue there. If, if the road started further on your property, your road started, you know, closer to the northern end of your property and then swung towards the wetland crossing, it seems to me that would be a bit safer. And I've just had, you know, and when I review the other developments that we've approved in town, the only ones I regret are ones where we allowed buildings too close to the main road coming into the development. Whereas I see other, you know, other developments, where you don't, you don't even see the development from the road. The road swings in and then all the houses, there's plenty of houses back there, but you don't see it from the road, so I.
That first building, John, is, I mean, further back than the abutting ones, it actually does conform to the setback in that, in that area.
All right.
If that was a single family home and you weren't looking at the rest of the house, that dwelling could actually be a lot closer to the street.
Yeah, how, how close to Harvard Street is that one?
The front corner is fifty feet, the right, well, the closest corner is fifty feet.
All right.
And the building setback in that zone is thirty feet.
All right. All right, one other question, is there anything, you only showed buildings on the Umbriana property immediately to the south of the entrance. What other, are there any buildings on the Fagan property here that goes back?
We don't own that. Their, their house is way up in the street.
Yeah.
Okay.
The house is in the very front portion of.
Okay, because in terms of, you know, this development impacting abutters, that's the property, you know, that kind of sticks into your development, so is that all just, just wooded or?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. And likewise, what's shown is Tracy Karoo, is that house?
That house is up at the street.
Up at the street?
Yeah.
Okay.
And the one next to them is one that we had purchased and acquired all the land in the back, and then we sold that grandma's.
Okay. All right. Yeah, that's, I mean, that's my general, oh, the design of the one and two family, single two unit buildings, looks like you tried to design the garage so it doesn't look like a garage, am I reading that correctly? Just the doorway, it looks like you tried to make it.
Yeah, I mean, we always try and minimize street facing garage, all the two kind of in your face.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, I appreciate that, I also appreciate that you've just made it a one car garage and not tried to have two car garages. I think it looks a lot better and one car should be sufficient here, plus, I mean, you've got the driveway anyway, so there's certainly room for, for two cars.
Yeah, they're oversized ones, so, so, you know, two sit-ins could likely fit.
Okay, all right. Yeah, that's, that's my main thing, I just, I just have a concern with putting a lodge building on here, and I would have been more comfortable with with the greater number of the, the one and two unit buildings. See what, what other people think and what abutters think.
Yeah, one question, what's the AC going to be for individual units?
Yes.
Where the compressors.
A lot of that will be on the roof, and then some, some of them will probably be down below and around the building, but.
Okay, so the roof, you're gonna have a flat period? Okay, thank you.
Oh, and also just to clarify, so when we say over fifty five, it usually means one, one, one person has to be over fifty five, it could be someone.
That's how we did the condo docs at Auburnville, one has to be over fifty five.
Okay, which I think is what's reasonable.
Yeah.
I don't know if you'd even run into a problem financing if it was really requiring boats, so.
Is there any minimum age on the second occupant? No thirty?
Can have a, can have a young spouse.
Has to be a spouse or significant other.
Right, right, okay.
How do you define a significant other?
If it wasn't, if it wasn't over fifty five, I would never have been okay with that big building.
Yeah. And I realize also you're sort of downhill from the street too, so, yeah, just ask, will, will the lodge building at the rear be visible from Harvard Street? We tried to figure it out.
I think you have to pull in a little way, a little ways before you're gonna see that, but.
Okay. Do you want to just respond to my, my question about the entrance though, and the safety, having it so close to Pine Tree Lane?
Well, I mean, the entranceway is rounded enough, I mean, I don't, I don't see it being a problem. Pine Tree Lane itself is one of five.
How was lots of, it's four.
Four lots of divisions, so it's not a major traffic area. I think we actually trying to keep away from the abutting Donovan property with the roadway.
They have a lot of farm animals there.
They have a lot of, as you know, there's barn there, they have a lot of farm animals there. So we kind of created a proposal, we're going to plantings along their property line and cut the road over to the southern side.
Yeah, I'm not looking, when I look at it, I'm not saying put it up against the Donovan property, but I'm just thinking if there was another twenty feet to the north, it'd just be a little more separation from Pine Tree Lane. All right, let me, we've gone on a bit here, and everybody's been very patient, so let me, let me go out to the public, and then we'll see where we go from there. So if you'd like to ask questions and make comments, raise your hand, give us your name and address, and just as sort of a, so kind of direct your questions to me, and then we'll turn to them and ask them to answer them, okay? All right, who would like to speak?
I got a question.
Yes, your name?
Mike Fagan, on the four ninety-one Harvard, that lot you were just referring to.
Oh, okay.
The, the wetland area, what's that gonna look like? These, these two yellow areas, when it's done, what's it gonna look like?
Okay, the, where the wetland crossing is and the replication.
Dirt, whatever it is now.
It's, it's, it's gonna stay the same way, it's vegetated, the only area where the road is, we're gonna fill that in, and then we're gonna, we're gonna build new wetlands for what we filled in, but these two areas here are not gonna be changed at all, they're just where they are.
Because all that, all that water, I, I live right here, so when they built across the street, I did get water for the first time, because they, they raised that level in that neighborhood across the street, the level got raised so much, I got water for the first time. This water's gonna want to go that way, so if they're putting more water raising this, that's gotta go that way. There is a little stream that goes right through here, you don't see it on this, but it's there. It, that's gonna flow, that's gonna go that way, so that's a concern of mine, that that water's gonna build up and back up into my neighbor's houses and my house.
Yeah, Mr. Gavi, can you explain, when you do like this wetland crossing, you got a culvert under the road, but what, what's the effect on, and what is the flow within the wetland area, does it flow from the north to the south?
North to the south, from Donovan towards.
Towards.
To see additional area, now that, what happens there is everything from, if you were to go there today, everything from Harvard Street heading to that low spot, all that runoff goes there. The runoff from up here at the one oh six contour, which would be from this house, everything drains that way. Our drainage is way, we have two catch bases in here that will pick up the flow from the roadway and these houses that'll collect in these two basins, they, then they collect the two other basins further down the road, and we're discharging those into infiltration basins where we did testing within the parking area. So we're gonna, we will be reducing runoff going to those two particular wetland areas. And those will be submitted to conservation and DEP. We're not allowed to increase runoff to abutting properties that are under stormwater management, so, where, that's the reason we have infiltration basins, that's the reason we did a lot of test pits down in front of the building here, and the soils down there were excellent, as they were actually abutting, Mr. Fagan's property, we dug some test pitches in off his property, and all the years I've been in, it's about the best soils I've seen in this town.
This goes down this way, and all together right there.
Yeah, so basically, this runoff presently all goes this way, this all goes this way, and, and this over here goes, goes this way. So we'll be reducing this runoff because it'll be collected within the road basins, it'll be going down to the next drain manhole with two more basins. The, the road is, can, is sloping from Harvard Street all the way to the end. If you look on the profile sheet, the whole roadway slopes, it's all going downhill at one percent. So this whole area gets reduced and, and then is infiltrated into the ground.
Down here.
Infiltration, yeah, if you, yeah, you don't.
Okay.
No, it, it, it's gonna want to, it wants to flow this way, right here.
Right.
So that's the end of my property, and that's the start of theirs, so I'm wondering if they could just, that trench through the years, it's kind of like almost leveled out, you know, like a trench. They have to redig this trench every so often out here. That trench is like almost dissipated throughout the years, I've maintained it, my property, and right here.
Yeah, it kind of disappears.
Through the years, it's kind of dissipated, I think they filled it in years ago, which kind of backed it up, but it's dissipated. But I'm just wondering if we can open that up, because this, this is what, right now, there's water, there's, there's water right there, two feet deep, traveling right to there.
Well, this line, that just delineates the zones between.
No, I'm not saying, it coincides with that line, but there's a, there's a two foot trench full of water, four feet, three feet wide by two feet deep, that goes right there. I'm just wondering if they could make that trench, because that water wants to go that way.
Well, there's a, there's, I mean, there is a pipe under the sewer easement itself, but it, it really dissipates. We, when we, we subdivided the Avery piece, and I looked at that, I, I always told Avery, you could, you know, I think there's a drainage through the end.
There is.
And he kept saying, no, no, there's not.
No, no, he told me there was, but there's two pine trees that grew up right in the middle of that trench, it's also blocked it. So those pine trees are still there, and that trench is, is blocked. I just would like to know if the trench could just kind of go where it wants to go.
Look at that piece of your.
Yeah, I mean, we can look at that if he brings that up with conservation, we're not, we're leaving this area in its natural state and everything is, but we are clearly reducing runoff to the Fagan property, that's why we're putting in infiltration basins for all the roofs to these units here, they tie into an infiltration basin, these do, these do, these do. So we're totally reducing the runoff that goes in this particular direction.
Maybe you can look at, so this is, let's see, is this a BVW here?
It doesn't classify this one because it was so small.
Okay, but I mean, is that why?
But there is, what happened was they, when the town put this sewer line, the sewer, the actual pipe runs up here, comes into a manhole right here, runs down here, so they did do some construction in there, and they did, because they were blocking a natural swell, they did put a pipe underneath there.
So you could at least take, take a look at it, I guess, this.
Oh, yeah, it's on your property and.
Prove the situation if they let us do it because it's gonna be up to conservation.
Yeah, bring that up with conservation.
Okay, when, when you get to the end of my property here, this, this is a downgrade.
Right.
And like across the street, they raised that quite a bit, are they gonna raise that, are you gonna raise that up?
No.
Or is that staying at the same elevation?
Yeah, that's. I mean.
With a multi-family building is going for the.
I mean, here's your, here's your existing one hundred, one oh one, one oh two, parking lot is one oh two, High Point, one oh, one oh three, everything is sloping into this, into a, into this basin here, or into this basin down here. So you're not, right, and what is it at the end of?
Well, yeah, I mean, we.
It's, what's the elevation?
Yeah, we're lower than that, Northville Road is lower than this here, this stone wall, actually, there's, there's a two or three foot immediate drop right from the stone wall into this piece.
there's a two or three foot drop immediate drop right from the stone wall into this piece. This was cut down when they when they did it.
So then you're not, you're not, you're just building this here, you're not raising it up.
No, no, no.
Okay, and just the other thing is, when I bought this years ago, the realtor said if this ever opens up, I could possibly develop that piece of property, put a, you know, there's my daughter, twenty-five years old, and she would like to put a little piece of property out there, little building. Would I have access to that? Would you be able to like, give me access to that a little instead of just putting a wall up?
Yeah.
Of her, so I have access to that?
It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a legal law because this is not going to be public way.
Yeah.
So you won't, even though you won't have what's called frontage.
Yeah.
On that road, so not without not without the zoning board approving, you wouldn't be able to have it. And you have a house up here.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, that being said, with the new ADA.
I was gonna say that it's ADA.
A D, you could, I would think you can put anything.
You may be able to put something back.
Get you to your existing driveway.
If if you can reach it with an existing driveway off to your property.
Okay, but I I won't be able to access it back, yeah.
There's a new state law. We're gonna be dealing with it at a town meeting for accessory dwelling units. It puts a limit of nine hundred square feet on the unit, but I mean, there may be, there may be a way for you to develop it off of off of Harvard Street rather than off of their property.
Okay, all right. And then I just I just.
This certainly doesn't rule it out. This really doesn't affect you.
Yeah, yeah.
In that term, yeah.
But I do I do agree with what you said about that big building. It's it's not character that to that area, so that's my other concern, just like you did.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else wish to speak on this? Welcome, welcome your comments. You came, you showed up.
Kathy Chancy of four thirty-four Harvard Street. I'm kind of with Mike a little bit and I guess I gotta when they put in pine tree, we had to adjust the water. Anybody that was here before knows what went through getting our our land dry and we had to make concessions with Stephen and get things done. That water goes over underneath Harvard Street and then goes across down south to towards East Bridgewater. Where does that water, I don't really know where that water, when it goes across, where does it go? Is it going to the same place that Mike just said? I'm not really sure of that.
From.
No, that ties into.
From Pine Tree Lane, is that what you're?
Pine Tree Lane and it went through my house and the the house we own next door.
I mean.
Then it goes underneath Harvard Street.
I mean, the majority of the wetlands for this site here goes into the intermittent stream out here. This this picks up and goes here.
Little stream here, it goes down and cuts through the senior housing, under their little access road, and then goes all the way down to Harvard Street. But it.
Oh, it goes that way.
It goes all the way down to Oregon, but then it comes off and picks up what you're talking about further down the road, but that ends up in this. This this this.
Behind all of that.
And then over the back.
That's that's my only concern again is, you know, being water, right? So we just, we just can't handle the water, so I didn't know if that would be backing up at all or changing anything there or it should.
No, and where, like Kyle said, where right now, if everything out there is uncontrolled because it's just natural, which whatever the grade goes is where it's gonna go. In in doing it in in this area here, we're we're bringing the road in and we're adding a couple of catch basins. That water currently all goes this way, but those catch basins are not gonna bring from the back of the property drainage out to some new drainage areas that we're doing underground.
And how far on Harvard Street, because I can't see the numbers, how far, what number Harvard Street is that big building gonna be behind? Go behind Avery, is it behind Tracy, is it?
It would be currently behind Umbriana and and Fagan, and I don't know who owns the house next to Fagan, but those three, that that'd be behind those three.
That's a Fagan loss.
How far from the street is that big building from Harvard Street to the face of that building?
There's three, six hundred feet.
Close, probably around seven hundred feet.
Is that?
I mean, North Hill Road, North Hill Road is nine hundred feet.
So if you were in at that building and you looked to our left, you're we're looking at the back of one of the buildings on Pine Haven. That's off our back it is. We're beyond Harvard Court, so when you're when you're, this is, these are buildings right here on Pine Haven. So when you're looking out the side of this building, you're actually looking at the back.
The building on Harvard Court, sitting right.
Oh, that's Pine Haven. The Harvard Courthouses are actually up here.
Oh, there's, yeah, this is, this is the property line to Donovan.
So right right here is where the gate is that they have crossing the road, so that separates Harvard Court. You can walk down that paved path, but that gate is like right here.
So it's not really, it's kind of more Pine Haven way than it is Harvard Street way.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, anybody else? Yes, send back.
Um, Lila Donovan, four twenty-seven Harvard Street, the farm.
Okay.
Two things, I park in your park the plot all the time when I have to unload stuff in the farm. Uh, street being there, coming in and out is not gonna be a problem with what is it, Pine Street Lane?
Uh, Pine, Pine.
Pine Tree.
Pine Tree Lane, coming in and out of there isn't gonna be a problem. I can't do it all the time.
Okay.
And the variance from fifty feet to forty-three feet, that's along my property line, right?
Yes.
I understand that correctly? Okay, and there's.
And we're planning on doing a row of trees and probably some fencing, but we'll work with you on whatever you want.
Okay, yeah, you know, you've been asking.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, your name and address.
Scott Singleton, four eighty-one Harvard Street. Of course, I don't want this to happen at all because of the animals out back and the conservation. I think the building is, the large building is way out of place. It's not gonna matter, although it is the six to seven hundred feet off the street, you're not gonna see it really. I just think it's gonna be an ice wall.
Okay.
And I have some pretty good concerns about that drainage area where you keep talking about when Michael talked about it running through, but I'm the one with the dark barn in my backyard. It doesn't show it on that map, but it's there. You know. But you could just clean it, the swell out.
I'm more than happy to as long as it's as long as conservation. Conservation has to let me, too, is what it comes down to.
I figured that.
Because they're gonna then say, well, if we do that, we then pour more more water than's already going to someone else, and then that's that's we gotta make sure it doesn't happen.
So this.
I'm more than happy if they let us clean something else.
Yeah. So this, they do have, so as said, they have to go to full conservation commission and the the abutters have to be notified of that hearing as well, so I encourage you to, you know, go to that meeting and.
So we will be notified when that meeting.
Yeah.
We already had one hearing with them where they approved, we did the wetland line last year, a year and a half ago, and and just to establish where the wetland vegetation was. And now we have to go back with justice and and go over what we're doing to protect the wetlands, but also we submit all the drainage calculations to the conservation commission on how we can handle the water and where it's going.
So you all should, you know, those of you who have a concern should go there and express to the conservation commission. It may be a case of you telling the conservation commission to let them do something that might not otherwise, you know, happen. Anyone else wish to speak on this? All right. I guess I'll just go back to the board and any further comments or questions on this?
If I, if if the twenty-seven units, if this wasn't, was not a fifty-five and over development, I would not I would not be favorable to the condo building, large condo building, but where it's over fifty-five, I I'm I'm okay with it.
Okay. I mean, I think besides the that it's over fifty-five, I think also that the distance from the road and the fact that it's downhill from the road is going to minimize the impact. I I guess I'll just kind of go go down the, throw the members before we close any hearing, just kind of get their any further thoughts or reactions of the voting members. Mr. Andrews, anything you have found of this? Anything, Ms. Andrews? Okay, Mr. Kimball.
Uh, only on the master deed, it should be written into the master deed that it's an over fifty-five and has to get approved by the zoning board to be changed. And in the Auburnville one, I believe there's a thing that says a selectman can approve, and it shouldn't be the selectman. It should be board, or it should be the zoning board, so if you could check that out. Very good.
Definitely would be a condition of our approval, so would have to come back to us.
Yeah.
Which I think would be true of Auburnville as well, because that was done in the variance.
The word says, or select.
Oh, okay.
Selectmen wasn't there, I mean, we're comfortable.
Skimmin?
I have no problem with that.
All right, I mean, if the if the rest of the board is okay, personally, I'd I'd rather see it all be one two two units, but I can see first of all, it certainly creates a different price point, a different, we're talking about a building with elevators, right? So, you know, maybe for people who even in a condo don't want to own, you know, a freestanding, single or two-family unit and want to have a smaller unit, don't want a basement, don't want any of this extra space. It does does accommodate them. I will ask, I guess, about the, in a sense, it's not our concern, but the having a having a a single condo association where you have, it just seems like kind of an in imbalance of values, interest.
Yeah, there's gonna be a lot of adjustments.
In Auburnville, when we approved the the front buildings, they were now totally separate from the back, so it didn't come up there, but.
Yeah, I I mean, maybe the it changes possibly into two associations, but my initial thought is, and and talking to the attorneys too, is that they feel like they can structure it to that it would have it would equal itself out with how we make, adjust the condo piece and how we allot it.
Right, I mean, I realize, you know, most condo associations, your fee is based on square footage of your unit. But just here, you sort of have different different maintenance concerns, different different interests. Potentially see some some conflicts. We didn't ask about mail delivery and where is there a spot for that?
My initial hope is to have it at the entrance to the to the main building, but
Yeah.
it comes down to the the post office.
Yeah.
To meet with them. They may push us to have it more at the entrance up here. They don't like to extend the routes longer than they have to go and and a lot of times they've been in many of the neighborhoods, they're making us put it near the entrance, but I think we can make our case that we want to have it here, but it's up to their approval.
Yeah, especially where it's not not that big a deal to drive down. It's it's all gonna be one, whether it's within, whether it's within the main, the large building or a freestanding, something freestanding next to it. Again, I think that's the way they do it at Oak Point. It's.
Yeah, they have a separate building.
They, yeah, that they have a clubhouse at the entrance, but they still gotta drive down the road to get to it.
At Auburnville, we have the little confidential way and the mailboxes are right there in the.
Okay, all right. Yeah, because if if the post office makes you do it up at the off of Harvard Street, now you've got to have some kind of pull-in for them.
Plus, you could have handicapped people and there's no way to get to their mail without walking.
Yeah, it's. Well, they, yeah, yeah, unless they want to drive out there.
Yeah.
It makes a lot more sense to put it down, but with the main building.
We have a plan approval and we typically went into the post office and we typically postmastered, figured out that.
Or else something like towards the, before you get to the large parking lot, like near where the dumpsters are, some some little building there.
Yeah.
Might might be a compromise between the two. All right, then let's, before we close again, let's kind of make a list of the conditions that are gonna go in. Mr. Blot, first of all, let's let's make sure we cover all the zoning relief that's needed. So it's site plan approval. And you need variances from, well, let's the provisions, Mr. Blot, because I think you've said it.
Right, five four A. Land cluster development, eight and then eight four.
Eight four, yeah.
Eight twelve, multi-family dwelling.
Yeah.
An industrial, eliminate industrial zone, seven three C. Number one, three and four. And then seven three D, max eight buildings. I'll give you this sheet.
Yeah, okay.
And then eight ten C, and that's the landscape in the parking lot. And then nine three F, that would allow them to eliminate the sign after eleven P M.
Okay.
Then we talked about, let's see, we talked about, you know, subdivision of the of the, yeah, the natural open space, a western, westerly oak acre.
And no, no development by by the owner either. No development for additional units.
For the development, yeah.
If you mind if wanting to put a yard out there or something.
I think we're softball field for the senior league.
Pickleball courts. Now it really gets you in trouble with all the controversy with everybody living there. Have you put pickleball courts in? Also, just because this deviates from what's shown on the plans, the parking spaces are to be ten, ten by twenty to the extent of the elbow could be reduced to eighteen foot depth if we're necessary on the spaces in the garage under the, under the lodge building. And if that means less than twenty-seven spaces, that's okay. And all spaces in the in the main parking lot are to be ten by twenty. Is there anything else in terms of, oh, oh, put in the, in the condo documents? What what's the provision about?
The caregiver.
Oh. What would, how would you phrase for the for the condo documents and just in general terms that other other than the occupants must be over fifty-five, but one
Yeah.
of a of a couple can be under fifty-five and a caregiver who's a family member or can be a non-family member?
I think at Auburnville, we have a word as a family member, but I think I don't think that stops someone from hiring professional.
That's what I'm saying. Okay. Okay. That that provision is to be put in the condo documents.
I don't know if you want to, we will move the fire hydrants, but I don't know if you want to reference that at all.
Yeah, it's that fire hydrants to be located at at places satisfactory to the fire, fire, fire department. What about the, you you had a concern about the we didn't discuss the.
The turn radius for the apparatus?
Yeah, the turn radius for the.
It looks like you can just do, uh, come in the right side of the building into the parking lot, coming out the right where it says North Phil. It looks like you can come out of there and, you know, shoot a left or right, but I don't have any concerns with that, but anything, anything going on with the rear of the property, any kind of access, or is that just gonna be all open grass?
It's just gonna be grass.
Okay.
Are you okay with that?
Yeah, I think I'm okay with that.
Okay. As long as it is indeed grass, so if you had to pull a truck on there, you could.
Yeah, we will, we'll be able to put a, 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 on grass, I'll think.
Okay, but at least. We, we, yeah, yeah, again, and, you know, I'll put just fire hydrants and, you know, sufficient access for for fire apparatus to be.
Yeah, at twenty-four feet, the aisles are twenty-four feet from the roadway, the same as a subdivision road in the town of Whitman, so it's no different.
Okay.
And then they'll change to fifty-five without G B A approval.
Okay, right. Yeah, I mean, our our decision is based on this being in over fifty-five development. It wouldn't be approved otherwise, so I think that's that's the point we want to make in there. You can.
That's everything.
Okay, anything else? Anybody have any other? Anything else, anybody have any other?
The heights were okay.
Okay, yeah, the height of the building, again, you said was thirty-five?
Yeah.
Okay, so that, that would meet the lowest requirement of any.
Is it forty feet?
It's thirty, well.
Thirty-five is.
Is that, well, that, that larger building is in a limited industrial, correct?
Which would be actually tolerable. Let's see, maximum building height of limited industrial is actually forty-five, and then residential's thirty-five, so, uh... If we say not to exceed forty feet, well, that, I, I wanna give you a little flexibility.
Well, I think as a zoning, you can go to forty-five.
But this isn't an industrial building, so I wanna, you know.
I understand. But where, where they're, they're, they're gonna have to dig a basement, but that's gonna have to be above the water line, right?
Water table.
The water table? And they're gonna put three levels on top of the basement that's on top of the water.
Well, the height, the height would be based off the median grade, so.
Yeah, the back of the building's gonna be lower than the front of the building.
So you start averaging it.
Just because of the, the existing grade that's behind the building.
Right.
And.
Yeah, I would see it exceed where the garage is ninety, ninety-three, it kind of matches the back of the garage.
Alright, so if we said the height of the building is, you know, determined by the procedures of the building inspector, which involves an averaging, not to exceed forty feet. Is that, is that where, okay, let's, let's do that, 'cause I don't wanna lock you into thirty-five feet and then not have it work. Alright, any other conditions? Alright, anything further for members of the public before we close the public hearing? Yes, ma'am, send back. Go ahead.
What's this, where, what did you have the single family?
Uh, it's at every hundred, it's twelve hundred on the first floor, five hundred on the second floor.
Oh, and I do wanna put it, I mean, it's on the site plan, but there, that there is to be landscaping, uh, along the Donovan property as shown on the site plans, I do wanna put that in. Alright.
Is there anything in replication or the, you know, the, the, the lands?
Yeah.
The, the replic, the replication, and what we're replicating is this little area here, which will be replicated, that's why we have a retaining wall here, so this is considered replication.
Right, I'm just trying to remember if we had, if there was any condition that we needed.
No, it's up to.
Yeah, yeah, I agree with the conservation. Alright, then I'm gonna, yeah, I think we've, you know, we've covered that they will, you'll work with, I won't put this in the conditions, but you'll work with the neighbors on seeing whether you can, uh, relieve, relieve any lockages in the drainage flow. That exists, yeah. Alright, I'm gonna close, yes, ma'am?
Um, is Pine Haven between this and Route Eighteen? Or where does the Pine is Route Eighteen? Where does this back up to Route Eighteen, like water lines and all of that?
Uh, it went straight through, I think it came out of that, like, where your water line.
Yeah.
Yeah, in the back of, this is the whole property here, all the lines, there's this piece directly to the rear of this piece.
Yes.
Ma'am, if you wanna come up and look at it, it's right here on this, this.
Yeah.
One of my first things.
You're occupied.
Here's the locust. So this is Harvard Street, this is Route Eighteen, the whole property is only halfway to Route Eighteen.
Yes, yes.
Actually, yeah, just.
Okay. Alright, so I'm gonna, uh, close the public hearing and go into deliberations from the board. So I'll entertain a motion to approve site plan approvals and, and the variances that we previously listed with the additional conditions that I've just gone through as well.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Blaute, second. Second by Mr. Andrews, and a further discussion, all in favor? Five-oh, okay, it's approved, thank you everybody for your input, thank you.
Thanks, ma'am. If any of you guys want my, I'm gonna have to give it to the, 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 the. Okay, yeah, this is all done.
We went to all the trouble and.
Not changing, uh, now, instead, like, we have a conversation, especially privacy, because.
Too rough. No, we should, we should be in good shape. Right, and everybody. They take nine property. They, how much for?
The company you talked to has called my office, just got a little appointment at the building, we need to talk to them.
Yeah.
Yeah, Tom's my dad, he's the, uh, official.
He should have other bits, must have, in the landing.
So, parking lot is.
Okay.
Yeah. So that was, that was actually a section six. That was the one I had to talk to, it's, 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 it's. Had the fifteen, uh, five.
Okay.
We'll talk, I want to talk.
Okay.
Alright, that's fine.
I found my old, my original zoning board card, twenty-five years, this year.
Twenty-five?
Twenty-five. No, I, I came on in ninety-seven. But I became a chairman on a team.
You were the chairman.
You know, it's like, the, the, the zoning board, the right, and the site, the town, go to the board, zoning board, still has Fred Gilmitty. I was told you have to go and change that.
I'll look at it.
We've gone for two years.
We're still there, Fred?
Yeah.
That's the old one, which is the.
It's the old one. If I want any of these.
Uh, let me, you know, you know, let me have one of them for her, yeah, so reviewing the graphics.
Yeah, folk, Kyle, if everybody could just be quiet for two minutes.
Kyle?
Kyle?
We're gonna be quiet.
Need you to be quiet for two minutes so I can finish up our business and then.
No, no, stay right there.
Stay right there, that's okay, it'll just take us minutes, we just gotta approve some minutes. Yeah, so I've got a couple of minutes to cover, minutes for case number four, for twenty-three Jerome Street. This was myself, Mr. Andrews, Mr. Blaute, Mr. Kimball, and Mr. Jones, with.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve by Mr. Kimball, second by Mr. Andrews, all in favor, five-oh. Case number five, twelve-oh-seven, Auburn Street, uh, same people.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve by Mr. Kimball, second by Mr. Andrews, all in favor. And the general minutes for, uh, March twenty-fourth.
My vote.
Motion to approve by Mr. Kimball, second by Mr. Andrews, all in favor. Okay, so we have meetings on April fourteenth and on, um, May twelfth, Wednesday, C G, at this point. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Move, second by Mr. Andrews, all in favor, meeting is adjourned.